Hi, everyone. This is the October 6, 2022, meeting on the Rockport Planning Board. In attendance on the planning board are three members. So we do have a quorum. In addition to me, Tom Mekus and Horstland are both here. Peter Cutner is absent. So that being said, we'll start with what we always start with on our meetings is the public comment period at the beginning of the meeting to allow people to raise any issue relating to zoning. Doesn't have to relate to anything on the agenda, but just they want and they have a brief period to talk about that. And then we have another public comment period at the end of the meeting. So they can also say something at the end of the meeting. So doesn't have to be the same thing can be different. Doesn't matter. Is there anybody, Robert, who's got their hand up to say to make a comment?
Yeah, Toby Arsenian has to send up.
Thank you, Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. I wish to comment on the proposed watershed water supply protection overlay district. I find fault with it. And on page six of your printout for the public hearing, it reads parcels partially within the WSPOD.
Can you mute him? Please? Can he hear me, Robert?
I couldn't hear you very well for a moment there. I don't know if you were too far away from your computer.
Let me just make sure that can you hear me now?
Yep. Clear.
So can Toby hear me now?
I would assume so.
Okay, Toby, you're bringing up a topic that was the subject of the public hearing on Tuesday. You can you can unmute him now.
To go on before where I was interrupted, I was reading.
Don't go on and don't read. I want to ask you a question. Are you bringing up what was discussed at the public hearing last Tuesday?
Yes, indeed. You just invited people to comment on the zoning.
I know what I said. Let's not play games here. So what were you not were you not available at the public hearing to discuss this?
I was indisposed.
I saw him. I saw him present.
That's correct.
Well, look, you know, we don't, we don't have, if you're going to go on about this line by line, which it sounds like you're going to do, I don't know if you're doing this intentionally, but that was the time to do it. To raise it now when none of us has the law in front of us.
I was reading it to you.
I don't know. I know you will, but we don't have.
We can hear it. The public, public hearing was closed.
Yeah, we had a public hearing. We closed it on and it was on the very topic that you're discussing now.
You wish to proceed in ignorance. I am trying to help you. It will be embarrassing for you at the town meeting. That's all I'll say.
Your point then, and don't read sections to us. Get, tell us what the problem is that you see that you didn't tell us last Tuesday.
That I didn't tell you last Tuesday. It says there that you've included in the watershed protection overlay district, all of the lots in their entirety, that the line delineating the district crosses any portion of them. So that if 100 square feet of your lot or even 10 square feet of the lot were within that line, then the whole lot is included. But that is not what you have shown on the map. From that, it follows that the map is not accurate. It does not represent the district, which is a necessity, that the text and the map, you know, be the same thing. And yeah, it is additionally to be said that taking in jurisdiction and taking away people's options on areas that are not in fact part of the watershed overlay district is arbitrary and depriving them of their rights for no good reason, not accomplishing anything.
Wait, first of all, in, in, in address to your first point, what the ordinance says is that if your lot is partially within the district, then it will be considered to be entirely within the district.
That's just what I said.
Hold on, hold on. That doesn't mean that the line on the map has to show the lot entirely within the district. If it was a portion of the lot.
You're interrupting me. Yes, it does mean.
Let's move on then because we're, we're just going nowhere here. You know, you're going nowhere, Toby. You can bring that up, but that, that's not a, that's not a valid point. The point is if that, if a line is within a, if the line on the map shows a portion of a parcel, then the entire parcel is considered to be within the overlay district. That doesn't mean that the line needs to show the entire parcel as being within the district. It says that the, it only has to show a portion of the lot within the district. If it shows a portion of the lot within the district, the rest of it will be considered to be in the district. So I don't think you're correct in your analysis there, that it has to be, it has to show the entire lot within the district. That's not correct. So that, and by the way, that's, I think, been the law for a long time. And I don't know what your other point is about, you know, this, this, this water, water supply protection district has been around for a long time. Really, nothing was, very little was changed in terms of coverage. It's the same, pretty much the same as it was. So do you have any other points about that?
It will be appealed.
Right, it's, it's the same. It's been around for like, how many years? People appeal it for what?
And later it will be appealed to the Attorney General because the map and the text do not match.
Okay, all right, I got that. Okay.
Good.
Thank you for appearing at the public hearing, though, by the way. That would be very helpful. But I guess you just don't want to do that. So okay, any other comments?
There are no other hands in the audience.
Let's move on to the next item. A and R Gold Standard Properties, 85 High Street, map 19 lot 63. Someone here for gold standard properties?
If you're here for this item, could you raise your hand in your video or use the hand raised function so that I cannot mute you?
Contact was Alex Gold.
Yeah, and I remember this happened the last time, didn't it? We, we, we had it on. I don't know what's the matter with these people. They submit an application and then they don't show up at the hearing?
Maybe they don't check the meeting notices every day.
It's like, it's kind of inconceivable that someone would go to the extent of submitting an application with maps done by a surveyor and then not show up, no one, not the surveyor, not the applicant, no one shows up at the hearing.
Don't we have to approve within 21 days or reject it?
No, we're gonna just deny it.
Okay.
That's, we don't know what's going on. Maybe they don't want, maybe, you know, maybe they just didn't want to pursue this. I'm gonna, I'll entertain a motion to deny the application with leave to resubmit.
So moved.
Yeah.
Second.
Seconded by Harry. Roll call vote. Tom?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
But also the applicant has not appeared on this application. We have no alternative but to deny it was obviously with leave to resubmit the application in the, whenever in the future. Okay. Next item, Michael Caffey, Six South Street. Hi, you're here.
I'm here. Like, people won't show up to these meetings.
It's so much fun.
I know. I'm here tonight, though.
Good.
You want me to start? Do you want to recap?
No, wait, what? Okay, I'll just give a brief summary. What you want to do, Six South Street, I believe, is to you want to put down, you want to essentially pave what is now a gravel drive and parking area that I guess provides access to several residences on Six South Street. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's a condo. So, yeah, three, there's three residents altogether.
Yeah.
With reclaimed asphalt.
Yeah, with, yeah, it's reclaimed asphalt. Your, your original application was for gravel and that was actually, I think, one of the conditions in the application was that it be gravel. Now you want to alter that condition. You want, you're asking the board to alter that condition.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't the original applicant. That was the developer before we bought the place. So he made it aware to us when we purchased the different condo units that the driveway, the driveways had to be gravelled. So I went through the old site plan and because the driveway is a big mess, so we were just going to have it regraded as it stands. Does somebody come and fix it up for us?
Michael, I have a question for you. Who owns it?
The trustee, where I'm a trustee, there's, there's three, there's three units here, A, B, and C, Six South Street, where each we took over as the trustees earlier this year from the original developers who owned the property.
And, and, and are you, I mean, if there are three of you, you're here, but the other two aren't. Or are they?
I'm sorry, I missed what you just said.
Are the other two trustees, what, you know, you're here by yourself.
Yeah.
But have they given you authority to appear?
We've discussed this and everybody's on board with it. I've been keeping them apprised. I had to tell them I screwed up because I missed the last two meetings, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, do we have, can you act alone without them on this issue? Because this serviced all three of your residences?
Yeah.
Under what theory? I mean, you know, you're, are you like a managing trustee or something?
I volunteered to take over the books from the S and J Corporation.
Okay. When we How do we, I guess what I'm asking, I'm not trying to give you a hard time here, but I think it's a point that needs to be addressed is you want to do something on this property. It's not owned by any of you individually. It's owned by a trust? Is that correct?
It's a condominium trust and three unit owners are trustees.
So how do we, how do you establish that you have the authority of the other two trustees to do what you're doing right now?
I mean, we've sat down and had meetings about.
I know, you know what you've done among yourselves, but we, the planning board wasn't at your meetings. I'm talking about now. How do we establish now that you have the authority to do that without having some kind of written acknowledgement from the other two trustees that you have their authority to do what you're doing?
I guess in that case, we don't, I don't, I could text them and try to get them to come in.
You're not going to get it tonight.
You'll need a trustee certificate if it is indeed a trust.
Yeah, I had that. I could send that to you.
Yeah, well, okay, but I mean, this is kind of a threshold issue. Because you are talking about, you know, trust property that you want to alter. And you need to have all the trustees. For example, what if the other two people didn't want to do this? And you're here saying, hey, I want to, we want to pave this road.
I understand your point.
You get it. Okay. So when can we, can we get that so we can move this application along? It's been, you know, I'm not saying it's our fault. It's been around for a while now. We, you want to get it going. And so
I just want to look at the application because I, I thought I had our three names listed on it. You haven't.
I'm looking at it right. I got it here. I'm going to pull it out. Yeah, it says, okay, it's, it's lists. It's a letter. It lists the three trustees, you, Linda Goodrich, Kathleen Morrell. And it's got the decision of the board from before you owned it, attached to it. But it's, there's no there's no other indication other than your letter that you're, you know, that there are other, that two other people are on board, other than the fact that their names are listed, you know, on the type letter. But other than that, we don't have anything else. I think we need that.
In other words, you, you're not in a position to make any decisions tonight. You would have
This is, this is a threshold issue that, you know, I mean, I know you're trying to do this on your own and I guess by doing it on your own, you're, you kind of, you know, you take a risk and you're, this is, the risk is evident right now is that if you had a professional doing this, perhaps they would have said, hey, look, you need to have this and you need to have that.
Yeah.
That's okay, but we need that. We, we
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. We can't have people, and Harry, you want to chime in here? We, and I'm, nobody can come to the board and say, I want to do this with property that's owned by somebody else.
This is a due authority matter. And we don't have evidence of due authority, given the nature of the ownership. So with a trustee certificate signed off by, I guess, the beneficiaries in this case, right, or the trustees.
It would be the trustees.
Yeah, the trustees that with, with the, with the action that is being considered, then we can effectively move forward. Sort of like corporate resolutions, if you had a corporation, homeowners association or whatever the entity, legal entity happens to be.
And does each trustee need to have a trustee certificate or is it just one document that is
Typically, it's typically one document with all the signatures on that document. And so
I would have to have, I would need an attorney to draw this up.
Yeah, it's, it's not really overly complicated. It's just going to refer to the original trust document.
Yeah.
The trust, the trust might be recorded. It may not be recorded.
It is.
So
Trust document listing all three of your trustees?
Yeah, that was amended this past January.
Okay.
All right. Yeah.
So, Harry, would it, in your view, as someone in commercial banking, would it be adequate for a simply a statement that, you know, from Michael that it's or from the other two that he has the authority to appear on their behalf?
Yeah.
Me to.
The trust, the trustee certificate will lay out who has the authority and what what that individual authority is authorized to do. So it can't be, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be just a blanket authorization. It should be specific to this purpose and application.
Right. Okay, well, I don't want to waste any more time because obviously this is not going to go anywhere tonight. So, you know, obviously, I'm in over my head. I'm not aware of these technicalities. If I'd been, you know, had known about this, I would have come better prepared. At least had the right stuff. So what this means for us, our backs up against the wall in terms of time. So I will probably withdraw the application for this year. And our contractor is just going to clean up the lot, not put anything down other than the existing gravel that's here to get rid of the potholes just so we can get through the winter and probably revisit this next year.
Why don't you finish? I don't understand why you're doing that. I mean, it's up to you. You can do that, but why not go forward with your application? And if you're going to get an approval, get the approval now and then you can do whatever you want later. Why would
We have, we have about three weeks left where he's able to do the work.
Well, he doesn't have to do the work right away. You can get the approval without doing the work immediately.
How long, how long is it good for? Is it several years?
Yeah, it's good for like two years or so. So, you know, it's up, if you want to, if you want to wait and go through this later, I mean, we, we still have some other issues we have to address with this application. And, you know, that's up to you.
Do you want to discuss the other issues? Just so I'm aware of what they are or is that
Well, one of the, one of the questions here is, you know, this was a public hearing back in, you know, whenever it was issued.
Yeah.
And, and now you want to modify the, modify the terms and conditions. And, you know, we may need to have another public hearing because this has to do with, you know, water runoff. And, you know, that's something that people on adjacent properties may have some interest in. So that's, I'm not making a decision. I don't think the board's making a decision on that now, but I'm just telling you, that could be, that could, that's going to be something that's going to be discussed.
Yeah, and, and I think that we originally were trying to find out who do we go to to discuss this? We kind of went around in circles, but from what I understood, it came back to the planning board to decide whether the request we were asking for was substantial or insubstantial. And if it's substantial, then you would go to the public hearing. If not, you would be allowed to make a decision.
Well, right. I mean, that's kind of the issue. So that's, but we're not even, we're not there yet.
Yeah.
Because we don't even, you know, we have an application that needs some work.
What other issues are remaining that I need?
Well, I think that's, that's one of the main, that is probably the main issue is, you know, you're asking for a modification for your application. Asking to change a service surface to a different type of surface that may behave differently when water is on it. And therefore there may be stormwater issues that weren't there before.
Yeah.
That's, that's something that we need to discuss. Alrighty.
Okay, so I just wanted to walk away here. In terms of the trust and certification, you said that if, I, I'm still confused on that point about you said the application would, would be good for two years. That's, this one.
If you got an approval, it would be to do what you want to do, it would be good for two years.
Yeah. All I'm saying is that we'd like this to clean up what's there, get rid of the potholes.
Yeah, go ahead. You can add anytime you want.
Yeah, right. And that, that was the original plan until, you know, Jerry came along and recommended that we go to this process. Or they, that he put down the millings and that's when I brought up, well, I think we have to go back to somebody to get an approval on that. But here we are. So he'll clean up the place for us just with what, you know, material that's here and and then we'll come back, you know. I guess I still want to continue to pursue this.
Yeah, fine.
Yeah. So I would get on another meeting, the next meeting, and I would have to bring the trustee certificate.
Well, yeah, you want to show the trustee certificate, but beyond that, you want to show that you have the permission or an authority from the other two trustees to pursue this application.
Yeah, so the, so that's two separate things.
That is two separate things.
Sounds like the trustee certificate we already have.
Yeah, that we already have, but you don't have the other document.
Yeah. Their permission.
Granting you as one of the trustees, the ability to act on behalf of the other trustees.
Okay, I got it. I got it. Okay.
Jason, there, there still could be an issue about the material, this milled asphalt.
Not even getting to the substance, really trying to avoid getting into the substance.
Yeah, that's fine. Yes, I just want to make sure that when I come back here, I can at least speak on behalf of everybody else.
That's, that's the main issue right now. Yeah, the rest of it about the materials and its properties are and what's going to happen and all that.
Yeah.
That, well, that will be addressed later.
Okay. I got it.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Much for your time. That's okay. You know, baby steps.
Yeah, I, by the way, I just want to let everybody know, I got a, a text message from Alex Gold. I don't know what, he's having some kind of a problem. And let me give him a call. Because he's obviously
He can't, he can't connect via Zoom?
Yeah, I don't know.
Sign off if that's okay.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Hello? Yeah, I told them the meetings, I, I don't know what he's probably, he's probably trying to sign into our October 4 meeting. And, you know, instead of this one, that's just my guess. I'll try calling him one more time. This is one of the downsides of Zoom. The upsides, but this is one of the downsides.
Saves him the trip all the way from Gloucester.
Yeah, but I mean, he would have, would have been here, you know.
Yeah, I know.
All right, let's well, I think let's just go to the next application and maybe we'll hear from him later. We have Jeffrey and Jacqueline Amaro at 29 Landmark Lane.
Come on down.
Yeah, there they are. They're here. Okay. So, all right, you've got an application for an A and R and yeah, it is, hold on one second. He's telling me that okay, now wait a second. This guy's calling me. Hello? What is he doing? Hello? Hello? I don't know why I can't hear him. He might have a problem. All right, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. and Mrs. Amaro.
Hi.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for having us.
Yeah, so you've got, you've got an A and R. You want to create a lot. And you're, you are in the RA residential district. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So I've got, everyone has a map here. You've got a, basically what you, what you want to create is what they call a flag lot. A lot that has just enough frontage, 75 feet on Landmark Lane. And then goes back behind the existing lot. So lot one would be the existing lot, correct? And lot two is the, is the proposed lot.
Correct.
Yes.
Right? And this proposed rear access is kind of a, is that something that's already on the ground? When I went out, looked at it, I saw like a, you know, looked like a little path that went feet. Is that
There's been some driveway there before. There's, there's a lot of motors and car motors on town land. I think that one time there may have been a garage back there and we cleared it out. We found bumpers and bricks and all kinds of things. So
Yeah. So anyway, so your new lot will be 20,971 square feet, which is just over the 20,000 square foot minimum. Your frontage is 75 feet, which is just over the 75, 75.50 feet, which is just over the 75 foot minimum. You're in the wa- likely in the watershed protection overlay district, at least the, the new lot is. I don't think that's a concern for us right now. And that's about it.
Looks like both lots would be in the district.
Yeah. Because the line runs through both lots, just what we're Yeah. So, you know, but there, there's an existing So, you know, but there, there's an existing dwelling. Um, and I'm assuming that this is being done because you're hoping to sell it to someone who's gonna build a second dwelling on this lot too. Just guessing that's your intention.
It could be, but we also, uh, we have, uh, two children who are interested in finding housing.
Yeah. Well, there's nothing wrong with doing what you're doing. I'm just, but yeah, if it's, if it's your children, great, you know? So, does anybody have any comments or observations about this? I mean, it is an A and R. It is, it does, it is on a public, you know, on a traveled way. Uh, he does have the front, they do have the frontage. The lot is of sufficient size for the lot district. You know, there's not, I don't see anymore, but maybe there's something.
I have, uh, I have an observation. The plan doesn't have any elevations on it. And the general topography up there is sloping. One of the things, uh, under the A and R auspices is access and where you have that flag shaped lot, where you have roughly two hundred and twenty feet or so of an alley to get to the rear of the lot. It's difficult to determine from what I've seen, having driven by, and also from this plan, if there's anything there that would, um, interfere with accessibility to the buildable portion of that rear lot.
I have a, um, a map that has, that does have contours on it. I didn't submit it. It's from, um, the, the G I S, geographic information system from the uh, towns layers. I can share my screen or I could send it.
Jason, how do you wanna handle that?
Well, you know, I don't know, it, you, do, do they need to get an A and R? Do they need to show contours?
Well, my question is, is, is one of access. Yeah. Which, which is an A and R.
Right.
Requirement.
Well, they, they do, the lot, lot two does have, you know, it does have frontage.
It has frontage, yes. It has front-
It's got frontage. It's got adequate frontage and um, looking at it, you know, actually physically inspecting it, there wasn't anything that struck me as being a problem.
Yeah, there was nothing apparent. Uh, it's pretty thickly wooded.
Yeah.
To the right of, of the residence, where I assume this um, access point will go through. So it was without getting out and walking the site. Uh, I can't, I can't tell whether or not, whether or not that there is, you know, a significant drop off that would uh, impede the access to the buildable portion of that rear lot.
Yeah, I, I, I kinda see what you're saying, cause you wanna make sure that lot two actually does have access to Landmark Lane, that it's not like a fifty foot drop off.
Correct.
Uh, from the access to the lot, which would, would, that would be questioned, questionable, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Are you thinking for the owners or for first responders?
Both.
It's, it's not quite that much of a drop off. We drive right, we, there's a stone wall that we haven't gone all the way back there, but, um, on the other side, I kinda, I drive through my front lawn, which I rather not do when I want to get in the back. So I drive out of the back and I do some maintenance on brush and, and, um, that type of thing. So the, the drop off from the, the road to about the, um, to the center of the property is probably about ten feet. I'm looking at two foot contours here and, um, um, it's, it's, um, it gets hilly at the bottom of the lot, but it's in the, the access to the, where the lot would be is, um, I wouldn't say it's flat, but it's also, uh, I don't, I don't know my, my slope, um, measurements, but it's not really a high slope at all.
I, I'd feel better.
More than the existing house.
Yeah, I'd feel better if there were contours on that plan.
Okay. Well, let's, let me just take a look at something before we go any further. I have approved that required. Let's see what it says about. Constructive approval effective in terms of limited plans.
So, um, there, there, excuse me, there, there are contours. If you use the towns maps online, which is the, um, I, I access it through the accessories. They, they also have, um, the contours which show, um, they're one foot contours and they show from the beginning of the property to the, well, to the midpoint, ten feet, and then it gets hit, little hilly in the back and it goes, um, the back has about a, um, thirty foot drop, no, twenty foot, feet past, twenty foot drop past that.
All right. So he, here's what I'm thinking, you know? A and Rs are, they're kind of a strange animal, but one of the, one of the uh, things that they do have with them is a very short turnaround time uh, for approval. Meaning, uh, once an A and R is filed, and it looks like this was filed on September sixteen, um, there are actually twenty-one days from the date of filing that the planning board needs to act on the A and R. And the action that can be taken is one of two actions. There, it can be approved or it can be denied. There's no conditional A and R that I'm quite sure. You can't say, well, we'll approve it, but you gotta do this, this and this. Either we approve it or we deny it. So that's kinda where we are right now because I think we're, you know, we're, we, if we waited till our next meeting, we'd be over twenty-one days and it would be approved anyway. By Paul. So, I, I'm, having seen this, I'm comfortable with it. But I, I see Harry's point. Um, and the only thing that we could do is to send the applic-, deny the application and send the applicant, then the applicant will have to resubmit with contour lines. I don't think I've ever seen that done, but you know?
But, so the issue, the, as I see it, is you've got a relatively narrow access point. And it's a rather lengthy, it's a rather long access point.
Right.
And if you can't gain access to the buildable portion of that lot, uh, there's an issue. And, and that is something under the A and R. It's, it's, it's not, I'm, I'm not looking to, you know, um, deny this. I, I'm looking for evidence to support it. And I wish, I wish the plan was better than it is. I mean, it's a great two dimensional plan, but with contour lines, I'd feel better about making a positive determination.
Jason, if, if we approve this, that's still no guarantee that the two lots are buildable, correct?
Well, one lot already has a house, huh?
Right. So we wouldn't be necessarily saying that this is, uh, you know, approved as buildable. There are other considerations that can come in like Carrie's mentioning, so.
You, you can have an A and R lot that may not be able to get a building permit.
Right.
That's, that won't be the first time.
So in that case, we don't need to worry about the, all the access to the interior or other features that could make it unbuiltable.
I don't think we do. I mean, I understand what Harry's point is here. And I, I appreciate the concern, but you know, these, A and R is a very, um, strange animal, as I said earlier, and it really doesn't take much to create a new lot under an A and R. I mean, the title of the A and R is approval not required. Meaning you don't have to go to subdivision approval. You just say, here's a lot. We've got the frontage. Here's the frontage. The lot's the right size. The dimensions are correct, you know?
May I, may I read something? So this is out of the A and R handbook.
Yeah.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts is dated January nineteen ninety-seven, revised in September of two thousand and ten. I'm going to the bottom of page three. And I'll read a paragraph with your indulgence.
Yeah, absolutely.
One of the more interesting aspects of the A and R process, if not the subdivision control law, is the vital access standard. The necessity that the planning board determines that vital access exists to the lots shown on a plan before endorsing it in a, in our plan is not expressly stated in the subdivision control law. The vital access standard has evolved from court decisions. The decisions have been concerned as to whether proposed building lots have practical access and have focused on the following two issues. One is adequacy of the way on which the proposed lots front. That's not the issue here. And number two, this is where it gets a little bit thorny. Adequacy of the access from the way to the buildable portion of the lot.
Well, that is kind of the, that does kind of hit home here.
I, I, um, I don't know if it's permitted, excuse me. Um, but I have on the screen, I, I have both a, um, sir, a previous survey from the same survey that has contours and, um, some contours. And I have the maps online, which shows our lot with the contours on it. And, um, I have those up. I don't know if that is.
No, but that, that's, look, we're, we're not, that, that's not really the issue here. The issue is, I mean, I think the contours are the contours. The issue is that if you, if the contour lines aren't on the map that's approved, they're not anywhere. In other words, that map has to be self-contained. We can't be looking at things online to confirm things that are on the map. The map has to show it. If the map doesn't show it, it doesn't exist. So that's why I, you know, no one's, Jeff, no one's disputing your contours here, but they're not on the map.
Not on the plan.
They're not on the, the plan that you've submitted. And, and this is a somewhat unusual lot because it is a flag lot. In other words, you've got a very long access point to get to the buildable part of the lot. And I, you know, I, I mean, Harry has, Harry has a point, um, that how do we know that that portion in the back is buildable? If, if the lot were different and if you, it was simply side by side with your current lot and it was, you know, right on, on the road on Landmark Lane, then it really wouldn't be an issue. But this is different because of the long access, because of the flag lot quality of it. So here's the, you know, let's not beat this thing to death. Okay? What could, what you could do, and you could do this before the next meeting, is you could have your surveyor plunk the contour lines down on your map.
Yeah, sorry.
And resubmit it. Follow me?
Yep.
Yeah. And then, I mean, it's, there are no other issues. Then it would probably be approved.
Okay, so. So our next steps are to re- resubmit the application with.
No, you don't need, you don't even need, yeah. You can resubmit with a new, with a revised map, which has the contour lines on the map, which it sounds like will show that this lot is accessible and would be buildable.
Oh, I have a question, Jason. Under the A and R, we either accept it or we deny it.
Yeah, well, that was.
We, are we required to deny it?
Yes.
Under the A and R?
I was gonna say, is that?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Have to, on the record tonight, deny this particular A and R.
Application.
And with the understanding that, um, the Amaros have the right to resubmit
Yeah.
with the contour lines.
Jason, is our next meeting beyond the twenty-one days?
Yes.
Yeah, would be sure.
I don't know the application date.
Yeah, the applicant, as I mentioned earlier, this is, was filed September sixteen.
Okay.
I really think it's cleaner if we deny it and then the Amaros can come back in immediately and, and refile their application.
Yeah, because, I mean, you know, this is, I, this law is just, it, it's painful because of this twenty-one day limit. I mean, it really, it doesn't really help applicants because if this were any other application, we'd say, okay, yeah, it's just been a revised map and we'll have it next meeting and we'll do it. We can't do that here because of the twenty-one day requirement that we take some action that's supposed to help people like you to require the planning board to act quickly. But in instances like this, it doesn't help you because we're in a box. So, and i- if that's the case, uh, then we need a motion in connection with this application that was presented.
Hold on, I'll make that motion.
Okay, and the motion, complete, once you state your motion.
Yeah, yeah. Let me go back here. Uh, I moved to deny the A and R application uh, for twenty-nine Landmark Lane as submitted to the planning board with a date of September, what was it?
It's filed September sixteenth, two thousand and two.
September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
With leave to resubmit with a revised map.
I don't think we need to put that in there. I think, I think we just deny this one and then it comes back the way we think it's gonna come back.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm just kind of letting them know.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You know, it's like, hey, you know, you can resubmit it. Don't get, just cause if the board denies it, it doesn't make the end of it, you know, that's all. So, all right. Motion is to deny the application and there's no prejudice to resubmit it. I'll take a roll call vote.
Second. We need a second. Did we get a second?
Second, sorry. Second, Tom.
I second. And I say I.
Hi. Harry.
Hi.
Okay, I'll vote, I'll vote to deny the application also. So please resubmit it.
So when we submit, should we submit the, um, form A, the questionnaire, the, the E and the maps?
You mean what I'm looking at here, the handwritten form? The two form here?
Think you're gonna need to redate it.
Yeah, just, it'll make it cleaner. Just, I mean, this is, this form will take you five minutes to fill out. Everything's the same.
Yeah, okay. And the, uh,
changing is your, is your map.
Yeah.
Uh, pay the application fee too? Also?
No. Not gonna require that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. All right. Um, I think that's it with the Amaro's application.
Did Mr. Gold come back? Did Mr. Gold come back?
Well, that's what I'm gonna look at. I, I don't know what is going on here. I'm gonna try calling him one more time. I think my phone's working still.
You know, I mean, I, when I, when I looked at that application, I saw, you know, the ele-, the elevations and it had the things on it that you'd be looking for.
Well, Gold, Gold is, the Gold application is a little different because they don't.
Yes, yeah.
They're right on the road there. They're
Right, right.
Not even any issue, but let me try calling him one more time. Oh, it's ringing now. Yeah, hi, Mr. Gold. Jason Shaw at the planning board. Can you hear me? Turn off your, turn off your speaker or any headphones you have, okay? He must have, he, he can't hear me. Hold on. I will, I will send him a text to have him log in one more time, but if he doesn't, then you just have to pass it over. All right, I just wrote him and told him that everyone else is logged in. Sounds like he's got a problem.
An IT problem?
Yeah, it sounds like a problem on his end.
Wonder if he lives in West Gloucester?
I don't know.
I'm over here by Wiggishy, Harry, and I'm not having any issues, so.
Yeah, I mean, look, if, if nobody, if everyone else is, is on the website, he's the only one having a problem and all I can think of is that he's got an issue that I don't know what it is. Um, so, all right, well, we've already dealt with that application. He's gonna have to call tomorrow and figure out. Okay, are there any, uh, any member items?
Maybe we should talk about the exterior lighting issue. So at the hearing on Tuesday, we, uh, we went over the decision to remove the commercial lighting provisions from the zoning because it belongs in the general bylaw. And so that means that for whatever degree of effectiveness those had, there will be no zone, no bylaws about commercial lighting until something is put in the general. So my thought was we should try to do something expeditious, simple. And I had proposed to do just a change in the general bylaw to just stop calling it residential. Just call it exterior lighting. And I think then it would apply to commercial as well. In fact, it already does apply to any commercial, a building that has commercial and residence in it. So, um, I did mention this at the government and bylaw committee meeting, um, yesterday. And they're not eager to pursue this. So if we'd like to do this, we're on our own.
Well.
They're not eager to pursue it or?
They are, want to do a very thorough rewrite of the uh, exterior lighting bylaw based on what expertise, I don't know, but it would not be until the fall town meeting of twenty twenty-three.
No, I, I don't think they said fall, was it? It was spring.
No, fall. They're gearing up for fall town meeting. So we're going almost a year without anything.
Right, no, wait a second, fall of twenty twenty-three?
Correct. That's a little less than a year from now.
I, I know, I know when fall of twenty twenty.
September, it would be.
Just, I don't, I don't remember that.
That's what they said. And in fact, that's the normal process is to do bylaw revisions at fall meetings.
So, Tom, I have a question regarding our current.
Yeah.
Bylaw, our lighting, or I should say residential lighting ordinance. Where did we, did we sort of follow that based on a, on a, uh, somebody else's, some other town's ordinance using best practice or, I mean, in your opinion, does it, do you think it needs to have a wholesale redo?
I actually have written some clarifications for it. I don't think it needs a wholesale redo. Uh, it was developed in twenty seventeen by, um, a former planning board member and a group of interested citizens that included me. And we had some lighting experts and some engineers on that group and I think we kind of, we did a pretty thorough job of developing something that could be enforceable. That was one of the issues, is this enforceable? And all, it doesn't need any kind of in-person inspection. You don't need to measure the intensity of a light or anything like that. You just need to look at the specs of the lighting hardware. And the building inspector can do that. So I think we, uh, we have covered the issue of enforceability. Whether it is enforced is another issue, but it is enforceable. So to me, it's a simple chance to just extend the scope of it to include everything, not just residential.
But here's the problem, Tom, is that we've got, and I'm reading over, um, Lori Kaiser's email and responding to you. Um, you know, they don't want to do this now. They wanna, they wanna wait and they wanna do it at the fall town meeting, as you've said. Uh, they wanna have input from the business community and I, I have to say that I think that, you know, commercial lighting standards and residential lighting standards are, you know, they could be different. There're, there're different types of lighting. So I, I wouldn't just run into this like there's some emergency here that we need to adopt the commercial lighting by, that, that it needs to be adopted right away. We, we, we've been without a commercial lighting bylaw for you know, years. So, I mean, if that's, I, I don't see the urgency to do it in a way that's gonna like make the government bylaws people unhappy, which it sounds like they would be. You know?
Yeah, I just don't know what their, that their process is, uh, even if not urgent, if it's, if it's well-informed. I, I don't know from where they're gonna garner any expertise besides from the existing body of knowledge we've accumulated and and maybe it needs more time, maybe it needs more public hearings, but, uh, I, I don't know that we would just hand it over to them and say, okay, you guys do it because I, I think we have better expertise having, having established the existing one for residential.
Yeah, I don't require a public hearing anyway.
Well, it depends if you think the, the change is, is that substantial and if it's an existing bylaw, you're just, you're modifying the scope of it.
It, it's gonna definitely require a public hearing. If we, if we just amended the residential lighting bylaw to include commercial, absolutely.
Okay.
Public hearing. Yeah, that would be a big change.
Okay, so we don't have time to do that for the upcoming special meeting and that leaves, uh, spring or fall of next year.
Yep, that's right.
And I'd prefer earlier if we could do it. So let me, uh, let me get back with them and, and offer to work with them to, uh, to make a, a new bylaw that covers everybody. Though the thing that's not gonna be covered is signs. There are lights on signs.
Well, isn't that lighting though?
Well, there are separate signage bylaws. I think they're both in zoning and
Yeah.
general. So that's another thorn.
Well, I, I, I know, but I'm, I'm just thinking out loud here. If a sign's got a light on it and if the light is offensive, then it's not a sign issue, it's a lighting issue, you know? It's the light that's the offensive, the offense. Not the sign, because it's lighted.
I know, I've seen some offensive signs.
Yeah, I know, but at least you don't have to look at them at two o'clock in the morning.
I, I mean, has, have people raised concerns in town about specific signage with lighting? Uh, I mean, is this something that's a hot button?
Yeah, there were some issues with the Shenlo. They have some kind of computer monitor in their window that was shining out, out the window all night. And although it's inside, because it's inside the window, it's still lighting up the exterior, so there have been some issues. I don't think they're current anymore, but.
I, I think people just need to wear polarized sunglasses because every time I go by it, I have to turn my head to read it.
Those prism ones that rotate your view.
Yeah.
Also Toby has pointed out that, uh, when we, when we did the residential back in twenty seventeen, we said we would be extending to commercial and municipal. And I think we have an obligation to do that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't quite understand why when they did the residential lighting bylaw, they didn't do commercial at the same time. It's, it's mystifying to me, but there must have been a reason. Maybe they just thought it was too much.
Well, the urgency was on the residential side because there were complaints from the residences.
Yeah, and, and I guess the other thing is too that, you know, commercial uses are in a much more restrict, limited area. Uh, you know, residential uses are obviously everywhere in town and, and people, I mean, I don't know about you guys, but you know, there are always people out there with their fleet lights on, you know, all night that you can see the light like half a mile away and they're just, it's just on for some reason or another. I don't know, but, you know, and I don't know what, here's the other issue. Maybe we're getting a little far afield here, but enforcement is a big issue.
Yep.
That is a big issue. Because that means someone's gotta be here at night looking at the light. You know? So, it's a problem.
Well, if the building inspector would accept photographic proof by some citizen, that would, uh.
Well, this, I, we wanna have that amendment to the administration section of the bylaw which allows the building inspector to, of course, that doesn't really apply to necessarily for non-zoning issues, but, you know, so people can write in and he's gotta respond.
Yeah.
Where or another, he's gotta respond.
I, I see that more as an issue with the enforcer than with the bylaw.
No, maybe, but. Okay, um, any other member items? No, every.
Comment, uh, just a comment.
Yeah.
Uh, I think later on this month, Conservation Commission goes back, uh, into meeting mode. There haven't been any, uh, conservation, Conservation Committee meetings for, well, all summer since, uh,
April.
Rock, since the ruckus. And, uh, now we have a, um, an agent who I think starts on the twentieth.
Yes.
Who's coming to us from Amesbury most recently, I think.
Yeah, and apparently he's got some, uh, got some good ideas too. So I think he's gonna be maybe a little more proactive than our agent, uh, agents in the past, which would be good.
Coastal Zone Management is, uh, I guess, uh, near and dear to him.
Which means it's near and dear to Tom, so that's great.
Yeah.
Okay, uh.
Jason, you have an applicant now in the, in the, uh, in the meeting.
Oh.
Alex Gold is here.
Oh, okay. Let's take his application then because, you know.
I'm fine with it.
Can he hear us?
I don't know.
I got a thumbs up, so all we need to do is hear him.
All right, are you prepared to, for him to be unmuted, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right.
Whoa.
Can you name your, state your name and address for the record, please?
Sorry, I'm Alex Gold.
Address?
Fourteen Lookout Street, Gloucester.
Yeah, you know, Alex, we, um, you weren't here. We denied your application, but obviously we can undo that today because you are here. There was some technical issue and I think it was on your end.
Yeah, sorry about that. I was, I was clicking on the October fourth link. I didn't realize there was.
Jason was right.
I thought that's what you did. I bet he's on the October fourth link. Yeah, today's the sixth.
Too many meetings.
I mean, I, I didn't, if you keep scrolling down, another, another one.
Yeah, okay. Let, let's do this. Let's, um, I have a motion to, uh, rescind the, um, denial on the A and R from Alex Gold.
Eighty-five High Street. Um, I'll make that motion or is that your motion and I'll second?
You can make it, you can make it, yeah.
All right, I'll, I'll move that we rescind the denial of the application for eighty-five High Street.
All right.
Second.
Negative by, um, uh, Tom, uh, take a roll call vote, Tom.
Hi.
Hi.
And I'll go in favor also. Okay, so your, your application is now, it's reborn. It is the Lazarus of applications. Go ahead. Tell us what you're doing.
What am I doing? Um, so I am going to, I'd like to build a single family for myself, uh, and family over on the, on the subdivided, on the new subdivision.
That'd be a lot too.
Lot too, correct.
And, um, so the, the, the property in front, the improvement in front is a multifamily, correct?
Yes.
So in that zone, the minimum lot area is fifteen thousand square feet?
Yes, for the.
Looks like you have all the, uh, frontage requirements, um, where you might, you might have a non-conformity on the setbacks on that, um, outbuilding, uh, to the rear, but that's probably pre-existing.
This is a, I'm sorry, let me just go back just so I make sure I understand. Uh, this is in the residential district, is that correct?
R three, yeah.
Residential?
Yeah, R three is what the tax card says.
No, I'm just looking at the, the, um, chart, the chart in our zoning law. Well, you've got uh, RA, which was the one that we just were talking about, um, single SR, RA and R. So, the minimum lot area for, this would be, I don't know what, what this is gonna be, but you, what's the lot size here? It's, uh, ten thousand ten thousand forty-eight feet, square feet. So since this, hold on one second. I believe this is in the R District. Is that correct, Mr. Gold?
I believe it is.
Yeah, okay, let me just. Yeah, th- this is in the R District. So the minimum lot size is ten thousand square feet.
Single family.
Yeah, and there's a, and the lot, the proposed lot is ten thousand forty-eight square feet.
But I think the other thing that we need to basically acknowledge is that the building in front, the existing improvement is a. basically acknowledge is that the building in front, the existing improvement is a multifamily. And so the area required for a multifamily, I believe, is 15,000 square feet, which this plan appears to.
Yeah, which is, in other words, he's not creating a non-conforming lot.
Right.
Well, maybe. Let, let's ask about the gross floor area. Is it more than 4,000 square feet?
I, uh, for the, for a proposed building?
No, the existing buildings.
It's not.
No.
I looked at the card and it, it's got, uh, some numbers that are over 4,000.
That includes the basement. So if you're in, in, if you're just considering the livable area, it's just under 4,000 square feet. According to tax code.
A living area of 3971, is that?
Yeah.
Is that current? Or have there been any additions?
No addition.
And that effective area, we don't look at that, do we? The 4425?
That includes a basement, so no.
Okay.
What are you, what are we worried about with the existing?
If, if it were over 4,000 square feet, it might trigger the higher setbacks.
Right.
Setbacks now. I mean, setbacks are what they are. In the existing, they're, you know, we're not the only, the only setback that might be relevant here would be the one between the proposed lot and the
Right.
existing lot, but the side lot, lot setbacks are there, the front, that's all there.
Well, if, if this were a new construction, it would need 20 feet.
Oh, well, new construction, yeah, might, but.
And you're making new lots, so I wasn't sure whether that triggered.
But he's got set, side yard setback of 34.2, 28.2, front yard setback of 48.6, 101 uh, feet of frontage on High Street, and it has 83 feet of frontage on this proposed lot on, uh, Kite Field Road. And, um,
It would be the, it would be the garage.
10 feet.
Yeah.
And if you look at that, that new lot line, you see how it jogs? It would appear that that lot line was obviously thought of in terms of maintaining that 10-foot setback.
Exactly, that's why it was done that way.
So is it still 10 feet if we were looking at a new construction of 4,000 or more square feet?
I don't know, I forget what the threshold is for that.
I think it's 4,000 because that's what it came up here on, on the Marmion 80 something.
Yeah, um.
I guess, I, i- is your question, Tom, related to lot two or lot one?
Since we're making new lots, I don't know if we need to remove the grandfathering for the requirement on a 4,000 plus.
I don't know that it's applicable here.
I don't know either. I'm, I'm asking the question.
Side yard setbacks is what we're talking about. Residential, single, two-family and multiple-dwelling accessory buildings and townhouses should have the following side setbacks, 20 feet for buildings with 4,000 to 5,995 square feet gross area, and 25 feet for greater than 6,000. So the side yards here are, um, yeah.
And that was my question. I don't know if the grandfathering goes away when you create a new lot with existing buildings on it.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't quite understand what's, what would be the issue with this for the, for the existing lot?
Yes.
Or lot one, which is, you're right, I mean, technically lot one is now a new lot because lot one is something less than it was because we're making lot two. Well, it's, you know, we're making two lots out of one lot, so lot one is a new lot, right? So the question is, what, the house on lot one is fine?
Yes.
So you're just talking about the garage?
Yeah, you said the garage would need 20.
That's if the building, the house had 4,000 to 5,990 square feet gross floor area.
Right, and that's why I asked the question, whether it was more than, and if, if that number that's less than 4,000 is still current, so that's that would answer it if those are the answers.
Hold on. That's a good, good point, though. Yeah. So anyway, uh, any other questions about this?
That's all I got.
All right, well, lot, lot two will have certainly a frontage on that road. Unlike the early, one of the earlier applications, the contour lines are on this, doesn't show there any issue about, you know, buildability of lot two. There is a structure, as you can see, on lot two, just to the, maybe to the south of lot two. And there's that lot line is 12 feet from that structure.
Look, we have contour lines.
Now, there's a, see, it's a 12, 12 feet plus or minus from the south end of lot two to the structure to the south. But that doesn't really matter.
Correct.
Does that lot, the line on lot two, the south, the southerly line isn't changing. It's the same line as it's always been.
Right.
Yeah. Um, okay, so do I have a motion to approve this A and R?
I'll make the motion that we approve the A and R for 85 High Street. Filed on what date? Do we, we have a filing date? Probably in the application, right?
Now I'm like, more.
Wait a minute. With a, with a, uh, ba, 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 with a an application date of, whoa. I don't see an application date on this.
Okay, here we go. I've got it here.
Okay.
Filing date unfortunately is illegible. Oh, I'm sorry, the filing date was September. And I can't even read it.
I see date of plan, but that's not what you're looking for.
No, 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 this is a date stamp from the planning board on the application. I can't read if it's September 1 or some other date. Mr. Gold, was there a time when you didn't show up on an earlier date?
Yes, correct, I had the, uh, wrong wrong date for the.
Well, actually, we, we we had denied this application earlier.
We denied it, yeah.
And because you didn't show up. Right?
Right.
But you didn't resubmit a new application, did you?
No.
So we're looking at the same application that we denied. All right.
Correct.
Just have to redate it somehow. Or let it go ahead and be approved.
I would say just let it go. I mean, this is, this would be form over substance. It's just, you know, submitted and it was denied, it's on the record, we're now approving it because not because of any deficiency in the application.
Right.
Uh, we didn't deny it because of that, we denied it because Mr. Gold just didn't show up. And so that was the only reason. The application is exactly the same. And I, I would just, we had, we had a motion to approve it, I believe.
Yeah, mo- a motion to approve the A and R application submitted for 85 High Street with a filing date of September 1st. Subsequently declined on whatever date of that, that we declined it.
And, and do I have a motion to second that?
We should put the date in when we declined it, that would have been.
Yes.
Yeah, we have to go back to our minutes.
September 15th for the last meeting.
That would make sense.
Yeah.
Which was denied on September 15th because the applicant
Right.
didn't show up.
And we are now three weeks from that date.
And we are now approving this application.
So second.
Okay, roll call vote. Tom.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
I vote in favor of approval, this A and R is approved. Uh, Mary will be in touch, we'll have to all sign the, um, the map.
Just a question, Mr. Gold.
Yeah.
When do you, uh, when do you plan on, um, starting construction?
Um, within two years, I would say.
So it's nothing imminent?
It's nothing imminent. No, I really wanna wait for interest rates to come down and, they ever do. And, uh, materials hopefully to come down as well.
And supply chain and all the good things.
Yeah, and you know, the point, you know, getting the plans done and
Right.
Um, uh, permitting to take at least a year anyway.
Yeah, it's a nice, it's a nice level lot.
Yes, it is.
And there's no time limit from our side, I don't think.
Okay, oh, yes, that is something I guess.
Yeah, oh, you're, you're, you know, I mean, you're just, we're just fine, you're just gonna be filing a map showing you created a lot.
Right.
You can do anything you want with it whenever you want.
Okay.
Well, subject to the usage limitations.
Well, right, but I mean, he's not required to build any.
Correct.
No.
Okay, sounds good.
So would I, just a quick question, would I, so I go to see Mary and pick up the paperwork?
Yeah, you gotta do that. All of us have to sign the maps, which we'll do. I mean, I, I need to do it like tomorrow. Um, these guys do, will do it really soon. Mary will probably be in contact with you about when you can pick them up and then do the required filings.
All right.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you for getting me in.
Yeah, I'm glad we got this straightened out.
Yeah, I'm sorry about, uh, technical difficulty on my end, so appreciate you getting me in.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
Right, so I think we, uh, did we get to let public comment period at the end yet?
No, did not.
Let's go to that now.
There to go.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Bye. Anybody wanna comment now?
Toby has a hand up.
Go ahead, Toby.
Toby Arsenean 95 Granite Street, uh, you recently spoke about your reservations about Zoom meetings. Uh, sometimes said to be an advantage or, or so said by the Board of Selectmen, for many people, not an advantage at all. Uh, I too have reservations and, uh, complaint in this case about your presentations. Uh, if the meetings were in person, the maps of the, uh, lots would all be there and members of the public would be free to go up, uh, to the desk and see the plans. And you presumably have the plans there in front of you, uh, so they're definitely in the public domain. And it would be, uh, you know, common sense and, uh, civil to project all of the, uh, plans on the screen so that the public, uh, following along could see what you're up to. Will you do that?
Well, we, when we can't, you know, well, yeah, certainly when there's a public hearing. But don't forget Toby, all the, these plans are here in this office. Um, and can be inspected at any time prior to the meeting by anybody, so you know, um, we don't usually, as I recall, when we, when we had a meeting that was ongoing, um, we usually didn't have members of the public standing up there looking at the plan when when, uh, people were talking, but that, that's a good thought and, uh, we'll make an attempt to do that. So, you know, people can look at what we're talking about. I, I understand what you're saying. I, I miss I miss a lot of aspects about the in-person meeting. But, you know, then there are those aspects that allow people to do things on a Zoom meeting that they couldn't do in person. So there, you know, it's a tough one. Anyway.
I can screen share drawings when, when needed, and we always do that for hearings, I think, but have not been doing it for A and Rs.
A and Rs, we generally don't because there's no public input essentially.
They are definitely a matter of public interest, as you're well aware.
And that's a different issue, though. Um, they are a matter of public interest, sure. That's why they're available inspection by the public. Okay, um, if that's it on the public comments, um, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, roll call vote, Tom.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
All in favor, motion, uh, meeting adjourned at 8:01. Thank you, folks.
Rob, Robert, did you ever get the closed caption going?
Uh, no, I, you had, uh, faded out for a second there. I have to talk to Mitch. It's something that's on, on the admin level for the Zoom account. So I'll talk with them next time I catch him.
Great, appreciate that. That would give us a transcript.
Yep, for sure. And, you know, it's good for accessibility purposes as well.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, good night. See you next time.